At this time, as we prepare to start our board meeting this evening, I'm gonna ask Ms. Hare if she would lead us in prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, first of all, beautiful day that you have given us. It is my whole your day today. Heavenly Father, this evening, we ask that you come into this meeting and make it what you want it to be. Help do it in your will. For those who are be reading, we ask that you ask them to come and help them. For those this evening, Lord, there parents, any of those who have anything to do with our children, to continue help that we need should our children you go with all our representatives on the wise Lord, that the decisions that they make nation. Heavenly Father, this evening, not for alone prayer, but to take this opportunity since Lord, for and we give do you. And it's an counted all done. Amen.
Call the Kershaw County School Board of Trustees meeting to order. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed agenda? Proper motion by Mr. Blackman, second by Ms. Furness. All those in favor, let it be known by a sent I.
Aye.
Those that oppose, and that's unanimous. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Proper motion by Mr. Jean, second by Dr. King. All those in favor, let it be known by a sent I.
Aye.
Those oppose, and that's unanimous. Awesome. It is great to see so many students and parents here this evening, and we you all. We're gonna move into our and prior to doing that, I noticed someone came in and don't normally do this, but I'm gonna do it this evening. And that's a Ms. Kershaw County teacher, named the first teacher of the year for Kershaw County. And she is with us this evening. If she would just make herself a wave her hand so we can, oh, right here. We'll at this, at this time, we have recognitions. Mr. Matthew.
Dr. Smith, Dr. Goodwin, people in the crowd. We will start our recognitions tonight by recognizing several outstanding students. When I, please come forward when I call your name and remain up front so we can take a group photo. Principals, you can have a picture with your, your student after it's all said and done. So first, we'll recognize students who have earned the maximum score on standardizing standardized testing this past spring. This year, we had 21 current Kershaw County School District students to achieve this tremendous accomplishment. SC Ready is a statewide assessment that includes tests in English Language Arts, Math, and Science. SC Ready is administered to all students in grades three through eight. Items on SC Ready are aligned to the South Carolina College and Career Ready standards. As we call your name, please come up front to receive your certificate and stay up front for a group photo with the others. First, we'll welcome Toby Martinez from Blaney Elementary. Toby earned the max Toby earned the maximum score on the science SC Ready assessment. Next, we'll recognize several Camden Elementary students. Katherine Aleo earned the top score in science. Earning the top score in math, Emma McGary. Also from Camden Elementary, Aria Williamson is recognized for her English Language Arts Assessment Score. From Camden Middle School, we have two students who earned top scores for their science SC Ready test. Will McLaurin Birch and Lincoln Picorni, please come forward. I hope I was close, Lincoln. Our next three honorees are from Dobie's Mill Elementary. Will Christopher Harm Hansen, Emma Irving, and Grace Lee, please come forward. These three earned the maximum scores on their science SC Ready test last spring. From Jackson School, Damian Gaines earned the maximum score on his SC Ready math test. Next, we recognize Jordan D'Agostino and Ty Jones. Jordan is recognized for his performance in English and Ty for his math. From, from Lugoff Middle, Riley Cannon earned the maximum score in English, Mason Gerard in science, and Colton Menendez in English. Lugoff Elgin High's Alex Karinchak is being recognized for his math SC Ready score when he was a eighth grader at Lugoff Middle last year. This is Emma. No, that's right. All right. We got it right. Katherine Corbert, Corbett, excuse me, and Adeline Sherborne from Pine Tree Hill are our next honorees. Katherine is being recognized for her English score and Adeline for her math score. Next, we recognize Baker Cato and David Ray from Waterie Elementary School. Baker earned the maximum score in English and David in science. And our final recognition goes to Lugoff Elgin Middle School student Theodore Holmes, who earned the top score in math last year as a fifth grader at Waterie Elementary School. While they're doing that, let's give these outstanding students another hand. Moms, grandmoms.
Yeah, y'all can come on up.
Don't visit. That's right. Don't visit.
Everybody good? Tonight, we also have recognized that have been named to the America's Healthiest Schools list by the Alliance for a Healthier Generation. First, Lugoff Elementary School has been recognized again this year as one of America's healthiest schools for their commitment to supporting students, staff, and family well-being. Representing Lugoff Elementary School are Doc, Principal Dr. Melissa Lloyd, Assistant Principal Jennifer Bonds, Nurse Anna Deal. Teachers Edward Rickwood, Erin Teague, Katie Hancock, Edwina Atkins, Meg Henderson, and Jessica Giger. They won awards in the following four categories. Improving nutrition and food access, bolstering physical education and activity, cultivating staff well-being, and increasing family and community engagement. Congratulations. Y'all have to wait off to the side, okay? Pine Tree Hill Elementary School was also, has also been recognized as one of America's healthiest schools this year. Representing the Pine Tree Hill Wellness Team tonight are Principal Marquita Barber, Nurse Carrie Tompkins, Teachers Quasia Wood, Kobe Wall, Joseph Tate, Angel Cook, and Mary Vanadder. They won awards in the following three categories. Supporting School Health Services, Bolstering Physical Education and Activity, and Cultivating Staff Well-Being. Also joining us tonight, representing the Alliance for a Healthier Generation, is Taylor Hurlick and Robin Cooper and the Kershaw County Coordinator of Nursing Services, Elizabeth Starling, if y'all would come up. You can't hide. Congratulations to the count and the bull pups. Our final recognition tonight goes to Wooler Technology Center's Agriculture Instructor Audrey Cathcart. Please come forward. There she is. Ms. Cathcart was named the 2025 Outstanding Early Career Teacher by the South Carolina Association of Agricultural Educators during the organization's annual banquet held in Conway in July. This award honors beginning teachers who demonstrate passion, innovation, and leadership in their early years of service. The Outstanding Early Career Teacher Award celebrates the essential role that new educators play in shaping the future of agriculture and strengthening, strengthening the profession from the ground up. Ms. Cathcart's impact as an educator extends far beyond her classroom. Her dedication to hands-on learning, leadership development, and community connection has already made a lasting impact on her students and the agricultural education community. Please join me in congratulating Audrey.
Our next agenda item is public forum. And we have Becky O'Hara. Yes, if you would come. And our public forum guidelines, they're prop, on the screen is opportunity to share information with the board. And you are afforded five minutes. And so we are open to hear what you have to share with us.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Dr. Goodwin, Chairman Smith, and members of the board. My name is Becky O'Hara. My husband Joe and I are parents of a ninth grader at Lugoff Elgin High School and sixth grade twins at Lugoff Elgin Middle School. I also serve as a certified South Carolina High School Swim League official and a certified USA Swimming official. I had a hard time deciding which shirt to wear tonight, so I'll just lay my swim mom shirt here. Tonight, I have the privilege of speaking on behalf of the swimmers and parents of our district high school swim teams, many of whom are here this evening. We respectfully ask the board to consider and financially support the YMCA development of an eight-lane or larger competition-sized swimming facility in our district and to place this project on the agenda for a future vote and a reply to the community. This facility would not only strengthen our district athletic programs, but also provide life-saving educational opportunities, new community resources, and a long-term value for Kershaw County. Our high school swim program is one of the fastest-growing sports in the district. Since its start in 2019, it has nearly tripled, growing from 24 athletes to 70 athletes this year. Thirty-eight from Lugoff Elgin, 26 from Camden, and six from North Central. Without more pool space, we will have to turn away athletes who want to participate. All three high schools have placed first, second, and third in their regions each year. The teams send a dozen or more swimmers to state each year. Last year, Camden Senior Grace Boyce placed first in the state in the 100-yard breaststroke and second place in the 200-yard freestyle. She and Lugoff Elgin graduate Zayshon Barr both signed to swim at Columbia College starting this year. An indoor year-round pool would allow all high school sports teams the opportunity to condition and cross-train. It would allow the swim teams to practice and compete consistently without weather interruptions and avoid swimming in a chilly pool in a sport that runs into October. It would allow Kershaw County School District to hold large regional meets. An eight-lane competition pool is the standard required to host these events. It's important to point out that a swim meet of any size cannot be held in a four-lane pool, which we understand is the current plan without district financial support. The YMCA has proposed contract terms that would give Kershaw County School District priority access with the district retaining 100% of gate and concession revenue. We've also heard concerns over the location, which would only be an additional five-minute drive for North Central students than the current Aquatic Center. Our students deserve facilities that reflect the same level of commitment the district has shown to football, baseball, and tennis. Partnering with the YMCA is a bargain. It would provide these benefits at a much lower cost than building a standalone school district aquatic center. This project also goes beyond district athletics. It's also about safety and education. Kershaw County is a water community. Sadly, we have experienced at least three drownings in 2025 alone. Teaching children how to swim and be safe around water is the most effective way to prevent these tragedies. Neighboring districts like Richland One and Sumter County include water safety in their elementary physical education curriculum for their second and third graders respectively. A facility like this would allow our district to do the same, ensuring every child learns essential skills like floating and treading water. It would also make year-round swim lessons possible. Right now, the Kershaw County Rec Department summer swim lessons fill almost immediately, leaving many families without options. The facility could also expand after-school and summer childcare programs, something especially needed for our older elementary and middle school students. The demand for aquatics in our school district and our community is clear. The county's summer swim team registration filled its 100-athlete cap in under an hour with a waiting list. The planned four-lane pool will not meet the demand of our schools nor our community. A competition-sized pool would meet that demand while also serving the broader community. It could host special Olympic events, adult water fitness programs, and rehabilitation therapy. It could support year-round USA Swimming teams so families like mine don't have to drive daily to Columbia for club swimming. It would also create student job opportunities from lifeguarding to teaching swim lessons that provide valuable life skills. In closing, a competition-sized pool with eight or more lanes would be more than a sports venue. It would be an investment in safety, education, athletics, and community wellness, one that would serve our district for generations. We respectfully request the board place this project on the agenda for a vote and provide a reply to the community. I also invite each of you to attend a high school swim meet this season to see the skill, dedication, and passion of our student athletes firsthand. Our home meets at the Kershaw County Aquatic Center are September 4, 11, 16, and 24 at 6:00 p.m. Please come. Thank you for your time, leadership, and commitment to our students.
Thank you. For our July the 14th meeting, I want to request that we take a vote to move that meeting to July the 7th, if that would be fine with the members. Yes, to July the 14th, if we can move it to July the 7th. Dr. Goodwin have some things that he need to take care of. So if we could accommodate that, I would entertain a motion. Yes. Okay. And second by, by Mr. Roberts, all those in favor, let it be known by a sent I. Those oppose, and that's unanimous. That's, the motion was to move our July the 14th meeting to July the 7th. Thank you. Also, we have our annual Legislative Advocate See Conference, and you have that for December the 6th and 7th. And if you plan on attending, if you would share, let Wendy know so she could sign you up. Dr. Goodwin.
First, a thank you for accommodating that move on the date. My wife will really appreciate it. I would, that's who, that was most important to. Last year, the legislature passed a proviso that says that annually we have to provide to you the booster organizations that operate within our county along with their officers. This list is, was in your package or in your folder today. It's on the long sheet. If you have any questions about those, please let me know. Some of those are still a little bit in flux this time of year because some of those groups haven't met yet. So, you know, they'll, they'll change a little bit, but we do have that requirement to notify you, so we wanted to put that into your, to your folders. Mr. Chair, if I could also mention, you know, the last time we met, we were just the second day of school. And it's always a fun time of the year, but it also, you know, you have all the little kinks that you work out. But I wanted to report that things seem to be back to normal in school this year. We seem to have settled in quite well, and we, we're very thankful for that. We have a, had a few teaching positions that were still open, but virtually all of those now have been filled. And so we're, we're in really good shape staff-wise, which is a good thing. We do have a full slate. They mentioned the, the swimming schedule coming up, but we have a full slate of athletics that are really cranking up the next two weeks. It, it gets quite busy. So if you have an opportunity to go out and support one of those or many of those, I hope you'll take that opportunity to do that. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
The annual Booster Club Report. That's what you, okay, so we're good. Mr. Willet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Goodwin, members of the board. Good evening. We bring before you this evening for consideration and approval what is called a Minority Business Enterprise Plan or an MBE Plan. This is required of all government agencies within the state of South Carolina under law and code that we adopt a plan. And that exact, that is exactly what it is. It is a plan, it is a goal, it is not a required percentage that we have to meet. But Mr. Morant, our procurement officer in the district, has worked hard to get a lot of things related to procurement in good order. And this is one thing that we're bringing before you. What this does is it takes our total budget and removes controllable dollars, meaning not federal dollars, not restricted dollars, but things where we procure goods and services with vendors. So we take that number of controllable dollars, which is about $24.8 million in this year's budget, and we're setting a goal of 10%. So that goal is 2,480,000. That is a lofty goal in this environment. And if you ask any auditor, the goal that is set by the districts is typically not achieved. But that is our goal, and that is the state recommended percentage to use under the procurement code. So a little bit about the Minority Business Enterprise from the, the article from the state, Article 21 of the law. So what is the definition of that? So it looks at minority from an economical and a social disadvantage standpoint to include racial and ethnic prejudice. From an economic standpoint, it looks at those who have a diminished capability of achieving market share because of impaired capital or credit opportunities. And this also includes woman-owned businesses. So anyone in those categories who own at least 51% of a business can apply for and achieve this designation. So I want to be clear that it is the company's responsibility to seek the designation, and then it is the company's responsibility to inform us that they have that designation. If we do not receive that, then they are not designated as so within our system. With that, we are not required to utilize this as any kind of preference when we choose vendors, if it is a vetting or a bidding or a quoting process. But it is there for their benefit as issued by the state of South Carolina. So this evening, we bring this for your consideration and approval.
Any question? Yes, Dr. King.
Very quickly, Mr. Will, you may, you may have inferred it just for clarification with regard to how the monies could be spent. Is that generally in most districts for capital improvements, that kind of construction? Used for pretty much anything?
It can include capital, most everyday operations. It would be in the way of goods, supplies, or services. But it can be, you can find MBEs or Minority Business Enterprises within the capital world for construction, et cetera. within the capital world for construction, et cetera.
Any others questions? Hearing none, it is before us for approval. Properly motion by Dr. King, second by Coach Blackman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those that oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss resignation and retirement of certified and classified personnel, employment of certified and classified personnel, and assignment changes and transfer of certified and classified personnel? Properly motion by Ms. Furniss, second by Ms... All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, it's unanimous.
Convened to open session.
Stop the properly motion by Mr. Jean, second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, that's unanimous. In executive session, we discuss resignation and retirement of certified classified personnel, employment of certified classified personnel, assignment changes and transfer of certified classified personnel. Is there a motion to accept administration recommendation concerning employment matters?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Furniss, second by Ms. Haley. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your left hand. That's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn in closing prayer? Properly motion by Dr. King, second by Mr. Jean. All in favor, let it be known by raising both hands.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for abiding with us this evening. We leave this on your divine presence. We ask that you lead us safely back home and find all is well when we get there. And we give you all the honor and glory that is due you and as in the past, we count it done. Amen.